So we're all here. It's 6:01. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the April meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. Thank you so much for joining us. If you're watching us on TV six, watching us on Facebook or watching us online, anywhere in the world, we're glad you're with us tonight. We'll do our customary roll call of council members. And if I can see them all, which I can't, I'm gonna make my best guess. Let's see, Dr. Sadler.
President.
Ms. Welch.
Here.
Ms. Hunt.
Good evening.
Ms. Foster.
President.
Mr. Smitherman.
Hi.
Ms. Franklin.
I'm here.
And the mayor is here as well. I believe that's everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, you can see on your screen, if you would like to participate tonight in one of our public forums, one will be held at the beginning of the meeting, one will be held at the end. You'd like to participate in either one of those. Probably the easiest way is to go to lewisvillenc.net. That's our website. Scroll down, click on residents, and then click on events calendar. And it will take you right to this meeting tonight. That's probably the easiest. However, if you don't have that and are looking to call us on the telephone, you may want to take a second and just jot down that phone number, 646-558-8656. When we come to those sections of the meetings, those will be the two ways that you can join us this evening and share your comments with us. So Stace, can you pull that down, please?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Bo, would you be kind enough this evening to lead us in the invocation?
I'd be honored. Let's pray. God, our Father, we give you thanks for this beautiful day that you've given to us, and we thank you for the many, many blessings of life. And as we contemplate the blessings that you've given to us, Lord, keep us mindful of those who do not enjoy the blessings that we do, the blessings of freedom, the blessings of enough to eat, a warm and a cool place to stay, and a wonderful town in which to live. And we give you thanks for that town. And God, our Father, we give you thanks for this council and for the staff, and how they guide and guide this this town. And, Lord, we ask you to give them courage and wisdom this evening to do the things that that are in the town that need to be done. We again give you thanks, and we ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Bo. Ms. Hunt, it's Thursday, so you get to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, and the visual.
Another couple of months of this, we'll have that down pretty, pretty bad, I think. The council members, just a couple of changes, or certainly one, I have one change, and Mrs. Walker has one change. On your agendas, on your agenda, A nine, or nine A, Solomon Development Technical Review. There has been a request by the representatives from Solomon Development to postpone consideration of that until our May 13th meeting. So we will, we will take that off the agenda this evening and move it to our May meeting. Ms. Walker, you also have a change on the consent agenda, correct?
The mayor, and I would like for everyone to remove the minutes from March the 11th. I'm still working on them.
And that will come off the consent agenda. Very good. Council members, any other additional changes, revisions on our agenda for this evening?
Were you going to have mayor a closed session?
Yes, thank you both for reminding that. We, we have added, with your permission, a closed session at the end of this meeting tonight. And that is the third change on our agenda. Thank you, Mr. Howf. Problem is, I can only see two lines of the agenda on my screen, still look at you guys, so I probably will miss some things tonight. With that, no other changes. We'll entertain a motion to approve. Dr. Sadler makes a motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Ms. Smithman.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Franklin, mayor's eye. Oops, I jumped. I saw the hand go up, but I didn't hear the words. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. These are items that generally come before the council on a regular basis. They are financial reports and our monthly minutes and a number of other things that we routinely take as a group. Any member of the council can ask for any one of these to be pulled off and discussed separately. If not, we generally take them all at once. Council members, what's your pleasure?
A move for approval.
Ms. Welch makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion?
And clarify that we are removing that one set of minutes as requested by Joyce.
That's correct.
Yeah.
There you go. Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Ms. Smitherman.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Ms. Franklin.
Ah.
Mayor is I as well. Very good. PJ, you have the stage to give our public safety report. Good to see you tonight. How are you?
Yes, sir. Good to see y'all. Hope you're doing well. Hope you're having a good week. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As you can see, the total calls for service this month, or for the month of March, were 590. Our security checks went up a little bit, the 284, as compared to last year at this time, about 258. Traffic arrest, 53 compared to 52, so we're staying right there close. Things are trying to kind of getting back to normal. With COVID, I think the restrictions letting up a little bit. Our alarms were 22 compared to 21 last year, and then, of course, our response times. Really, nothing stands out out of the ordinary, no significant events affecting the town, or a rash of car break-ins, but encourage everybody to slow down in the neighborhoods. Because with warm weather, everybody's starting to get out and enjoy it a little more. So obviously, we got to watch out for these, these folks that are walking and kids are visible playing in around the streets and stuff. So let's, let's all do our part and kind of slow down in the neighborhoods.
Very good. Any questions for PJ?
Yes, I had a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Sergeant Stringer, I know there's been a situation in town involving several neighbors, et cetera, and could you just sort of summarize and give us an update on how things are going with with that? I know many are concerned.
It's a, it seemed like it's a never ending battle. I know the situation that you're speaking of. We're being visible in that area. Obviously, council's going to address some different ordinances to, to go forward with some of the things that we need to address, but anytime that neighbors are having a dispute, we'll certainly try to, to help them out, but fortunately, unfortunately, sometimes the law only allows us to do certain things, and we try to more or less be a mediator. So we're still working to try to get those, those issues resolved.
And Sergeant Stringer, does the Sheriff's Department have a mediation center, or how is that usually?
No, ma'am. It's, it's basically up to the deputy. And what you have to have is one party or both parties that are willing to try to do something in that. And it's not, it's not what you say, a real formal mediation. But I have spoken to this individual, and I think we're long past mediation efforts, based what, what I've been told.
Very good. Anything else for PJ this evening?
I have a quick question.
Ms. Foster.
Thank you. Hey PJ, Sergeant Stringer. Good, thank you. You referenced the, the ordinance that we're going to be discussing later this evening. Have you had a chance to take a look at that, by any chance?
Me and, me and Hank, I have, I've looked it over a little bit with, with Hank, hit and miss, so I'll be studying that a little more. And I'm actually going to give it to the sheriff's office, my command staff, and let them look at it as well, once we have something finalized.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else for the sergeant? Thank PJ. Once again, thank you for all, and you, and your deputies do to keep us safe.
I did want to give a shout out to Mr. Smitherman. Thank you for coming and riding with us. That was, that was good. So do it again. It's always nice to hang out and he gets to see a different side of it. So thank you, David, for that.
PJ, did David wear his?
I enjoyed it.
Did, did David wear his camouflage?
Well, I tried to get him to wear a race car helmet and a Hans device, and never would go for it, but.
Ms. Franklin, do you have a question? We're just waving goodbye. Very good. Thank you, PJ. Stay safe out there, please.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a good week.
Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, you're up with our annual budget message.
All right.
Long awaited.
Yes, it is. Oh, here's a Dave's holding a picture of himself up. All right. Okay. Honorable mayor and town council. As town manager, I am pleased to present the proposed general fund budget of $5,309,944 for fiscal year 2021, 2022. The budget is proposed includes maintaining the current tax rate of 17.7 cents per $100 evaluation. This budget shows an increase in the general fund budget from the previous year budget as adopted for July 1st, 2020, of $558,459, or 11.7 cents. This budget, or 11.7%. This budget as proposed is balanced with $423,353 in fund balance from the general fund. This fund balance appropriation represents the cost associated with projects that are not recurring operational costs. Forsyth County has completed and released new valuation numbers as a part of a four-year cycle. Tax values for fiscal year 2020, 2021 were $1,432,93,843. According to Forsyth County Tax Appraisers, the total tax value of the town of Lewisville for the upcoming fiscal year is estimated at $1,608,414,955. This is a gain of approximately 12.3% for approximately $312,100 in ad valorem revenue. The estimated ad valorem tax revenue for fiscal year 2021, 2022 is $2,761,490, with one cent of the tax rate equaling approximately $156,016. For fiscal years, when there is a property valuation, the town produces a revenue neutral rate calculation. This calculation represents the tax rate required for the town to collect the same amount of property tax revenue as it did the prior year, using the values determined under the revaluation process. The resulting revenue neutral rate for fiscal year 2021, 2022 is 16.16.07 cents per $100 evaluation for the general fund. The current tax rate in the general fund for the general fund is 17.7 cents per $100 of valuation. The town of Lewisville also collects a levy for municipal, a municipal service district. The current tax rate is five cents per $100 evaluation. The revenue neutral tax rate for the municipal service district is 4.49 cents per $100 evaluation. This, the proposed tax rate for the municipal service district for fiscal year 2021, 2022 is unchanged at five cents per $100 evaluation. The town council has been diligent and used sound financial planning to continue its commitment to the citizens of Lewisville to provide the highest standard of services. They have done this while maintaining a level of fund balance to secure future funding opportunities. The available fund balance was $6,752,793 as of June 30th, 2020. This represents a fund balance of approximately 127.17% based on the projected upcoming fiscal year budget for 2021, 2022. This measure is well within the guidelines established in the comprehensive financial management policy adopted by the town council. At this time, a year ago, in April 2020, the future of the town's revenues was highly uncertain. Widespread lockdowns were beginning to be instituted across the country, and it seemed entirely possible that the national economy could experience significant disruptions for months to come. After decline in local sales tax revenues for March, April, and May of 2020, local sales tax revenues rebounded in the month of June 2020 and have remained strongly positive in the month since. In projecting revenues for the 2021, 2022 budget, we have followed the guidance of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, along with their researchers and economists. They have provided their most conservative projections for how our municipal revenues will emerge in the new fiscal year. As stay-at-home orders are lifted and commercial businesses return to operations reaching pre-pandemic levels, the league is cautiously optimistic about the economic recovery of the nation. The town of Lewisville stays committed to the continuation of all of its existing services for the upcoming fiscal year to include parks and recreation, finance, administration, planning and zoning, public works, residential garbage and recycling, stormwater management, community policing and beautification. All services are proposed to continue at current service level for the upcoming year. The town has four capital reserve funds in the current, this current fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual operations. Annual appropriations to these funds total 220,825. At the town council planning session recently held on, on February 6th, council reaffirmed its desire to proactively support the development of the downtown area and road and sidewalk improvements throughout the town, as well as its desire to develop future capital facilities, such as the new Mary Alice Warren Community Center. During fiscal year 2017, 2018, the town council learned the North Carolina Department of Transportation plans to assume financial responsibility for the remaining work to be done on the Great Wagon Road project to include design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. As construction of the Great Wagon Road progresses, we anticipate that the town of Lewisville will participate financially with the North Carolina Department of Transportation on enhancements such as trees, streetlights, as well as the design and installation of water and sewer infrastructure. The town currently has $934,369 saved in its capital reserve fund in a capital reserve fund, and $734,764 available in the Great Wagon Road Right-of-Way Construction Capital Projects Fund. Between the funds in the capital reserve fund and those in the capital projects fund, the town has $1,669,133 to fund any future expenditures related to the Great Wagon Road. The budget for 2020, 2021 suspended the annual contribution to the capital reserve fund due to the uncertainties of the economy during the pandemic. The proposed budget of 2021, 2022 reinstates the annual contribution to the, to this capital reserve fund of $115,000. The NC DOT has recently changed a policy regarding cost sharing for sidewalk betterments. In, in the past, the town of Lewisville would be expected to participate financially in the cost of sidewalks for the project, for a project like the Great Wagon Road. As of this year, the NC DOT no longer requires any cost sharing from a municipality for sidewalks that are designed as complete streets projects offering various forms of multimodal traffic. In February 2021, the town council voted to discontinue the design and construction of the Heritage Drive Regional Stormwater Pond, number one. The related capital projects fund was subsequently closed. With this decision, the town no longer needs to set money aside in the stormwater capital reserve fund for future capital projects. As such, I recommend that the stormwater capital reserve fund be closed and the residual balance of $404,674 be transferred to a newly established capital reserve to accumulate funds for the construction of a future public works facility in the town. In 2021, the 2021, 2022 budget as proposed also includes an allocation from the general fund to the newly established capital reserve fund for the construction of a public works building of $95,000. The town borrowed $2 million to finance the cost of the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. To help meet the financial service costs, the 2021, 2022 budget as proposed suspends the annual contribution of $170,000 to the municipal building's land reserve, land capital reserve. Funding for all capital reserves as proposed, is proposed as follows. Stormwater capital reserve, zero. GWR right-of-way construction capital reserve, 115,000. Sidewalks, bike paths, greenways capital reserve, 25,000. Municipal buildings land capital reserve, zero. Public Works Building Capital Reserve, 95,000. For a total capital reserve contribution for this year of 235,000. These contribution changes have made it possible to propose this budget as balanced for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. The capital projects that remain in the budget during the fiscal, during fiscal year 2021, 2022 are as follows. Active projects are the Great Wagon Road right-of-way construction, the Gateway Project, the Community Center, the roundabout at Lewisville-Viana Road and Robin Hood Road. Non-active projects are the Jack Warren Park Maintenance Facility and Playground Expansion. In April 2019, the town council authorized the Community Center Projects Capital Fund. The newly, the new community center is financed using funds from the town's municipal buildings land capital reserve fund, the stormwater capital reserve fund, a $2 million bank installment loan, and transfers from the general fund as necessary. The town plans to complete construction of the new community center in September 2021. It has a current budget of $4,789,393. The town will continue design work on the Gateway Project, along with right-of-way and construction work in the, in the coming fiscal year. This project is a roadway project to make improvements from Highway 421 interchange on Williams Road, with improvements continuing on Williams Road between the interchange and the newly constructed roundabout at Schallford Road and Williams Road. This project, you like, this is a project utilizing federal STP, the A funds. This project has an estimated cost of $1.5 million. The project will pay, be paid for 80, with 80% of the expected costs coming from federal aid and 20% from the town. The town also has been awarded funding for the construction of a single-lane roundabout at Robin Hood Road and Lewisville-Viana Road. The project will include necessary sidewalk connections at the roundabout and streetscape lighting and landscaping. The project has an estimated cost of approximately $1.27 million. The project will be paid for with 80% of the expected costs coming from federal aid and 20% match from the town. Lastly, the town has been awarded funding for a CMAC project to extend the sidewalk along Lewisville-Viana Road from Riverwood Drive to Robin Hood Road. The project will be paid for with 80% of the expected costs coming from federal aid and 20% match from the town. The total cost of the project is estimated at $1,234,411. The planning board, the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Development Board, and staff desire to engage in work related to two core project areas. The first area would be the redrafting of the town's comprehensive plan. The second area would be to reformat the Parks Recreation and Cultural Development Master Plan. A consulting firm was hired in March 2021 to accomplish these two goals. The budget as proposed contains funding to facilitate the continuation of this work in the upcoming fiscal year budget. In conclusion, this budget reflects the desire of the town to address the needs of the town while being cognizant of the economic conditions. Choices made and expenditures were done to meet the priorities and goals of the town council established during the year with the assistance of numerous advisory boards and committees. During the next few weeks, the town council will meet to deliberate the proposed, the proposal set forth and make adjustments as needed. I would like to thank the staff for their assistance in the, in the development of this budget and the town council for their continued guidance and support. Final adoption of this budget will, will be scheduled for the council meeting in June. If I may be of any assistance, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, William H. Perkins, Town Manager.
Thank you, Hank. That's a, I think all of us are excited to dive into this budget. It's, it's, um, it's really a very ambitious and progressive budget for the town of Lewisville with lots of enhancements that are going to make certainly life better for our residents. We look forward to it. Now, council will get the budget win.
We're going to start sending it out tomorrow.
Okay, very good. And there'll be, there'll be a copy available on our website?
Yes.
And, you know, people, some people still like to have a paper copy. Will we make them one by request?
I was planning to hand-deliver all paper copies to all council in town tomorrow.
Okay. Very good. Well, that's excellent. Ms. Hunt.
Um, Hank, you said you were going to deliver them tomorrow. I'm happy to come by if you want me just to come by and pick mine up.
You might get yours before you leave the building this evening.
Yay.
Hank, I could stop by also.
Okay.
You know, and do it that way. But my, I think, I think the question Mike was asking, are we going to have a available again in paper copy? Available as you step into town hall, so to speak, in the foyer.
Oh, yes, we, we, we have one available for the public to get to. Now, it is, it isn't the entire detailed budget. It is a budget ordinance that we provide.
Okay, well, I mean, just available. But obviously, it's going to be online, you know?
Yes.
It's a real quick, real, I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead.
The, the way you do it, is it possible to make notes on it if I get it electronically? Is it a fillable type PDF?
No, the, the PDF is going to be a scan from the machine.
Okay. I think I might have a program. Just send it to me first digitally.
Okay.
And then I'll decide whether I.
Um, digital may be a tough, a tough thing. We're going to put it on an electronic format and give out a link to those who need it for download.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I got a program that might be able to convert it, so I can, if I want to do notes.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you in mind with it.
And Hank, I'll be glad to come back and, and pick it up as well. It's going to be raining tomorrow, be in and out. So thank you for offering, but I'll come by and get it.
Okay.
Same with me.
Gee Marie, you're going to come by as well? All right. I guess. Go ahead, Pam.
I just want to make it clear, this is actually a budget workbook that you'll be getting, and it's very important that you have this by Monday night. Because we'll be going through the book page by page, Monday night. So everybody needs to make sure they do have their copy by then.
And we have provided executive summaries in most locations, including the, the revenues. So if you don't do anything else, read the executive summaries that have been provided. It will give you a lot of insight into how the numbers were developed.
Very good. Thank you.
So the meeting is on the 12th. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, or Monday.
Okay.
And Melissa, if you'll see me before you leave tonight, I'll make sure you get your books.
There we go. Excellent. Hank, once again, thank you and the staff. And I neglected it, and Mr. Franklin neglected to remind me that I did not introduce our staff members present this evening. And of course, you just met the manager, Hank Perkins, our town finance officer, Pamela Rell, our town planner, Stacy Talbert, our town attorney, Mr. Bo Howf, our town clerk, Mrs. Joyce Walker. So sorry for my overlooking of that, folks. My apologies. Very good. We're up to the point in the first opportunity tonight for our public forum. Anybody wishing to address the council at this time? Here are the numbers again that we showed earlier. One is the phone number, 646-558-8656. And the easiest way is lewisvillenc.net. Click on residents, click on events, and event calendar, and you'll have a link right through. Hank, do we have anybody who has indicated they wish to speak?
Not yet, but if, if those in attendance, oh, we have one. Those of you who are attendants, if you are in Zoom, use the hand raising function on the taskbar on the screen.
Okay, let's be sure we have this right. If they call in, it's, is it star six?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
I think it's star nine to raise your hand, and then maybe star six to unmute.
Very good. Star nine to raise your hand, and star six to unmute yourself.
Okay. I have Mr. Blaine, Blaine Brenton. I'm going to allow you, him to speak.
Thank you. Please, please give us your name and your address. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Blaine Brenton, 1955 Conrad Sawmill Road, Pottown. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and, and council staff, and I'm, I'm going to ramble on my favorite subject. And that's the junkyard up there, Robin Hood and Conrad Sawmill. I was inquiring about the fence ordinances. He hasn't got the fences all the way around his junkyard there yet. He's got basically one side on Conrad Sawmill Road. And it's kind of a hodgepodge, and I thought it's supposed to be eight-foot fences all the way around. I think it's kind of funny in a way that he's been hauling in brush. And I thought, well, he's going to have, you know, something for his coal, I mean, his wood stove. But he's been building a brush fence like the Colonials did back 200 years ago, which doesn't. which doesn't bother me, but I thought that was kind of funny. I also wanted to find out, is he allowed to have the, uh, business construction equipment on his property there, especially on the right of way along Conrad Sawmill Road? And, uh, there's been a, uh, one ton pickup truck, a flatbed pickup truck parked on Conrad Sawmill for a couple of weeks now. I've been told that the starter motor is bad and that he can't move it. Yet, he's the big mechanic racing his engines every night and working on equipment. I checked with AutoZone and Rock Auto. A new starter is, uh, anywhere from 80 to $200. And I don't understand why he's continued to allow to have that truck sitting there if all those tires piled up uh, on top of it. And also the license plate was, uh, is no longer current. It was last dated on, uh, September 20th last year. I'm, excuse me, September of 20. Well, he's been hauling vehicles in and out of the junkyard and, uh, he takes his excavator and pounds them down uh, to put on the trailers and also the, I guess it's the, the metal cabinets and stuff also. So that's another new noise thing we have now is this little mini excavator pounding down the cars or flattening out the cones. Uh, we still have the signage on all the fences. It, you can, they, they really stand out if you're driving from, uh, the west, in other words, coming from Conrad, Conrad Sawmill Farms. Uh, excuse me, Conrad Farms, uh, to rock through Robin Hood there. Those things stand out like a sore thumb. Uh, we still have all the revving of engines at night. Sometimes he's until three o'clock in the morning. The last couple of years, I haven't really called the sheriff, but now anytime, uh, past 11 o'clock, if he's revving his engine, I'm calling the sheriff. And I have been calling the sheriff. I think I called three times this month so far. Uh, I passed on a video of him racing his vehicle up and down the road, doing burnouts on to, from Conrad on to, uh, uh, Robin Hood. And I don't know if, uh, the sheriff spoke to him yet about that or not. And I guess that's, uh, all ramblings I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Brenton. We were, we were, obviously the manager was taking notes as you were speaking. I think a number of things that you expressed verbally tonight, you've sent to us and council members in, uh, in written format. So, uh, please understand that we're addressing those that we can address and we're working with the property owner to try to find some, uh, opportunity to address the other things that we don't have direct ordinances to address. Later on this evening, we'll be adopting or we'll be, let me rephrase that, we'll be discussing a new ordinance or a revised ordinance that will allow us a little more flexibility in dealing with some of the things that, that you've addressed. Thank you for your comments. Hank, is there anyone else?
No, I see no more hands.
Okay, very good. Again, folks, there'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting to provide us with your, your, your comments. It's a great opportunity for you to speak to us and for us to listen to you. Okay. Ms. Talbert, I believe you have a request for our item 8A Public Hearings on Ordinance 202, 1018.
Yes, um, first and foremost, uh, we will not be having this, uh, public hearing tonight. I would like to move this public hearing to the May 13th regular meeting of council for two reasons, for, for notification requirements that we have to meet that the ad has not run in the newspaper. Um, so, so we need to get that in there. And then also, um, I, I don't feel like council has really had a chance to, or, or me to really dive in with council, um, of all of the different, uh, new things that this ordinance, this new, this text amendment entails. So, um, I do want to, and Beau, tell us, do we have to make, is there any sort of motion or anything that needs to be made as far as to move that public hearing or does it have to be opened?
In this particular case, because we, uh, did not get the publication done at the appropriate time, uh, there, it would not have been a valid public hearing. So what could be in order would be to make the motion to, um, hold the public hearing at your regular May meeting if that's what your intention is or request is. So that would, that would require a motion.
Correct.
Before we entertain a motion, any questions for Stacy?
Well, I do, Mayor, also I have prepared a little PowerPoint to, I wanted to kind of dive in a little bit, um, just to get you all familiar with the text. So we can go ahead and do that if, if that's what the council chooses.
Very good.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen real quick. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
PowerPoint. Okay, so this is UDL 163, um, in regards to street trees in developments. So there's three chapters in the Unified Development Ordinance that are impacted by this text amendment, chapter A being definitions, chapter B, uh, for landscape standards, and then chapter D for subdivisions. And we've talked about this quite a bit for the reasons behind, uh, us wanting to take on this change. Um, it's, it's been a long time in the making. Um, first of all, the street trees that are planted, once they get mature, they cause, uh, safety hazards, roots overhanging into can, the canopies into the streets. It, it's a kind of a madness out there as, as the different safety concerns that it can cause, that these street trees can cause, depending on the type of tree that is planted and also where they're planted. So then on that same token, the maintenance of the trees become a burden for the town because once those safety things become a concern, we have to maintain those trees, the sidewalks have to be shaved or replaced. Um, and then sometimes, you know, here recently, we've had to even replace trees, um, that have became a major issue for the town. So just to kind of dive in, what I wanted to do tonight was just to give you the high level things that are being changed. Some of the things that are changed are typos that are in the ordinance that, that I like to go ahead and take care of, uh, when we're doing a text amendment. But the main thing is, first is definitions. Uh, in our ordinance, we have definitions for large, medium and small variety trees. Those trees are based on the maturity, uh, the height that they reach at maturity. So, um, we're moving, and all of these are recommendations from the Louisville Beautification Committee. I want to, um, have a huge shout out to them because this really would not have been possible without them and, and their expertise and, and recommendations that they were able to give us at the Planning Board, um, in order to make these changes. So the large, uh, variety tree would be equal to or greater than 50 feet. A medium variety tree would be between 30 and 50 feet, and then a small variety tree would be less than 30 feet. So that, those are the main definitions that changed. In chapter B of our ordinance, we have recommended plantings. Also by the Louisville Beautification Committee, they took our list and took a, took a look at it. So some of those trees have been moved around based on the new definitions of those height requirements. So you'll see that in the text and then also some additional trees were added, um, that were recommended by the Beautification Committee that are trees that are generally planted and do very well in our area. So some more changes, um, in chapter D, this, this is where the major, major changes come into play. Existing right now, um, we require a street tree in major subdivisions be planted at a rate of one tree for every 45 feet on both sides of the right of way. It's a little bit different in planned residential developments. But, but for normal conventional subdivisions, that's how they have to be planted. Um, and they're always planted within the right of way. And then once the town, the developer or the homeowners association petitions for the town to take over maintenance of that right of way, that right of way includes the street, the sidewalk, and also the street trees that, anything that's within the right of way other than, you know, those private utilities and those types of things. So that, what we wanted to do was mainly look at a new setback requirement for these plantings. So that we, we are trying to get away from, or, or trying to look into the future, if you will. So we don't have these issues that I mentioned earlier in the future. So for small variety trees, um, we're recommending a setback from the sidewalk or curb of four feet. And then lar, uh, medium variety trees setback six feet. And then we're no longer going to enlarge large variety, allow large variety trees to be planted as street trees along the road. Mainly because of, um, the very large root systems and, and the issues that they will, they've caused. Sometimes it's 10, 15 feet that the root systems can, can cause an issue. So we want to look mainly at small and medium variety trees to, uh, as, from that suggested plant list, um, in order for those to be planted um, in the right of way for street trees. So, uh, one way that we're trying to curve this and trying to get ahead of it, a lot of what I've seen here, um, and, and just in, in, you know, all types of development, um, is a lot of times the landscaping and the plans for landscaping come as an afterthought. We don't want that to continue to be an afterthought because if, if you look, there's, there's all kinds of things, the driveways um, of where those driveway cuts are going to be off the street, utilities. You know, you have underground fiber, water, sewer in some instances, power, you know, all these different gas, all these different types of utilities that are, that are also in this space in the right of way. Wanting to take into consideration street lighting, signage, distances from intersection, all these types of things. So what we wanted to do was require whenever someone is bringing in a preliminary subdivision for approval, the landscaping has to be in the forefront, forefront. We want them to go ahead and, and be thinking and get those landscaping plans together so they will know where these trees are going to be planted so they can, um, around the tree, decide where can the driveway be cut? Where can the streetlights be put in? That sort of thing. To make sure that all of our bases are covered. So we're not, you know, walking down a street once all of these things are put in and the development's already built out, trying to decide where can we plant a tree? Uh, because in, in that instance, it, it doesn't work and it's hard to meet the requirement of the 45 feet, every tree per 45 feet, whenever you're having to, uh, plant trees around all of these things that are already out there. So we, we do want to require landscape plan along with that. Most, most of the developers go ahead and put the landscaping on the plan. We just want to make that a requirement because right now it isn't a requirement. So they would, they would need to show us the wooded areas, the natural features, existing proposed planting, street trees and any other plantings that are required. We want to see those on the plan. Mainly, like I said, to go ahead and get that developer, um, to, to take a look at and to be thinking about where exactly they're going to place these trees uh, in reference to all the other things that they have to decide where those things go as well. So lastly, um, this was also a big recommendation of our Louisville Beautification Committee. The last thing that we want to enact is um, allowing a delayed schedule. Um, you know, a, a lot of times if, if a development gets approved in July, that's not the time to plant a tree because they're just going to die. And so we want to allow them to, um, submit a schedule to us in order to make sure that those trees are going to be planted when it's best for the tree to be planted so that, that tree has a surviving chance. And then lastly, once those trees are planted, we're going to require them to have a one-year warranty for those trees by the developer or whoever the developer may put in place. Sometimes it might transition to the homeowners association. But most of the time it's still going to be under the developer because all those houses aren't going to be built out normally in a year. Um, but we want to make sure that all of those trees, um, any required planting that goes along with that subdivision will be replaced if it becomes dead, diseased or missing, uh, within that one year. And then after that, um, generally that is also the time that the town is, is normally going to accept maintenance. So we figured that's, that's why we came up with the year. We thought that was kind of a good timeframe, um, in between the trees being planted and giving them enough time to really take hold in order for us to know that the tree is going to be in good health, um, prior to the town accepting maintenance of the right of way in those trees. So that's all I have for you tonight. Um, like I said, it's high level. Um, if you will, uh, read through the text and let me know if you have any questions.
Very good. Do we have any questions for Stacy?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Stacy, are you presenting this information again to us at briefing in, in May?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Doc Sadler.
Muted, Dr. Sadler.
Make the motion to move the public hearing till May 13th.
I'll second that.
Doc Saddle makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Smithman?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Franklin? Mayor is aye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Our next item of business. As I scroll down. Very good. Hank, I believe this is your item and it's a continuation of our discussion, um, last briefing and I believe last briefing for sure, and I believe maybe last month on our ordinance, our nuisance ordinances.
That is correct. Um, see here. All right, I, uh, sent out, I guess on Tuesday as requested from the briefing meeting we had last week, a, uh, copy that had been highlighted as per council request to highlight what is different between the current ordinance of unkept lots and the newly proposed chapter 43 dealing as nuisances. Anyone have any questions or comments after you've had a chance to compare that, that information and read my email?
Yes, Mayor, if I might.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, Hank, you had a question. You know, it's, it's pretty detailed and you're afraid of leaving things out um, or not including items that you should. How difficult is it if we want to add or subtract something in the future? Would it require any more than a agenda item and discussion?
No, you would just have to go through the process to amend an ordinance, which is about the same as we're going through to, to do this.
Okay.
But I think that, uh, to answer, further answer your question, Ms. Welch, I think that the, if you just had an addition or a change to the current ordinance, certainly that would be less complex and easier to digest for everyone.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council members?
Ms. Foster?
Thank you. Thanks, Hank. Yeah, thanks, Hank, for the follow-up on this. Could you go to the definitions yard waste, please? That, this is, um, this was my only point to raise. Um, can you, can you zoom in a little bit more, please? Thanks. So can, can you just talk me through a little bit of this? The, the definition of yard waste?
Talk you through it?
Grass weeds, leaves, tree trimmings, plants, shrubbery, pruning and, and such other similar materials.
Right.
So I'm, I'm wondering about from the, the newly named Sustainability Committee. I'm assuming this is a pretty conventional review of what's going to be just defined as yard waste as opposed to potentially some folks might grow some things in their lawn that they consider not waste.
Mrs. Yard Waste is it relates to the definition for a nuisance ordinance?
So quiet, all, all is quiet.
We were waiting with bated breath for your continuation.
Hank.
What's the concern with the, the, the definition, ma'am?
Was that you, was that you, Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, may, may, may I chime in here? Maybe this might help.
Please, I, I am sensitive to what you brought up last time. Thank you.
Let's, let's, maybe look at it from this, uh, angle that something that is generated rated on the site is much different than something that is hauled in from somewhere else as far as this may relate to it and in a definition of yard waste, if you will.
Right.
And Hank, what would you respond to that? I mean, if that, if people were hauling in and from a, a, a location, running a business and things of that nature or buil, building pan, limb fits, or, you know?
I think I can, we're talking about, and I tried, I tried to address this in the email as well. The presence of yard waste, I'll just put, like I tried to say this in the email, doesn't by itself constitute a nuisance. It's the manner in which the yard waste is kept. If it's been, if you had, um, yard waste that was a bramble of bushes that were put up and, and stored in such a way that it was obvious that it was attracting vermin like rats and mice and snakes and things like that. But if somebody has yard waste on their property and even if it's just of a temporary nature while they're waiting to burn it or otherwise dispose of it, well, if anybody called and said Jane Smith has got a pile of yard waste on her, on her yard, an investigation would be made and a determination on whether or not that pile of yard waste was constituted as, constitutes a nuisance in a public health sense.
Okay.
So these are just definitions of this. How they either are or not constituted as a nuisance upon investigation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hank, while we're on this, I know a number of folks have mulch piles and they take the grass clippings and what are tree limbs they've trimmed off their trees and they have mulch piles for decomposition and then spread over the yard again as yard covering. How do you, is there a, how would a mulch pile be treated in this? Because I mean, I guess potentially it could cover, it could attract rats because it's a pile of mulch.
Well, I would say first, if someone is, if I or anyone's out looking at your mulch pile, it's because more than likely somebody has been aggrieved in some way, you know, by feeling like there are rats or smells or anything coming from it. I feel like if I was going to go out there and you had a composting pile and it wasn't being turned over and it was going anaerobic and it was smelling, my advice would be just to turn it over and do something, put some lime in it or, you know, otherwise get it going. But I'm not going to be out to write somebody up on something that is easily fixable by a property owner, even if it is brought up as complaint by a neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for that clarification. That's where I was going as well. Thank you.
Not telepathy, yeah, telepathy, telepathy, whatever, okay. Council members, any other questions? Hank, I've got a quick one. I think we talked about it just briefly last time. But in a situation where we have cited an individual as a public nuisance or has a public nuisance on their property. And let's say we say you have, I think the ordinance says you have fifteen days to remedy that. If it is clear that the remedy will take longer than fifteen days, how is that handled in this ordinance that allows the manager, whoever does the inspection to say, okay, we understand you're making an effort to get this off, but it's going to take you fifteen days, so we'll go to twenty or twenty-five?
I think that our planners, Stacy, addressed this a little bit last week as well, and she is correct. If I go out there or whoever's been tasked with enforcement of this and has had a nuisance that has been ordered to be evaded, then you go out at the end of the requisite number of days and you go look at it. If it is obvious that someone is making a good faith effort to to correct the issue and they just need a few more days, it is not a problem to work with someone in order to let them continue the process that they're engaged in if they are in good faith efforts to make it right.
This would probably not include tires on the back of a truck in the right of way that's sitting there for three weeks. You don't have to answer that. That's a case in point. Council members, any additional questions for the manager? Hank, if you'll pull me back to the main screen, please. Very good. If there are no other questions for the manager, then counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move for approval of the nuisance ordinance?
Ms. Welch makes a motion. It does require a second. Ms. Hunt, did you second it?
Yeah.
Thank you. There's motion and a second. Any further discussion? Very good. Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Smithman?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Franklin? Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Mayor's eye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Just to keep you going, I think originally I showed you three ordinances. I wanted, felt like after talking to the mayor, we need to handle these one at a time instead of giving you all three. Next month I will be before you with the abandoned and nuisance vehicle ordinance for you to consider as well.
Thank you, Hank. Ms. Walker, do you have our next item of business, which is the Declaration of Withdrawal of a Road Dedication?
Yes, we have received information from one of the property owners that would like to go ahead and release the right of way, the dedicated right of way. If you look at your packet, excuse me, a letter has been received from them and they just need official approval from the council that we are not having that particular street on any kind of plan. Beau, I believe you like to always address this so folks understand why this is being done.
Right, and there's a statute in North Carolina that says that when a subdivision or other plat contains a road dedication, there's a requirement that that dedicated road or street be actually opened and open for use as a road or a street. If that does not happen within fifteen years of the dedication, the statute provides that that roadway, despite it having been dedicated, reverts back to the developer of the subdivision or plat maker. In this case, we have a piece of property that is the northern portion of Aria Drive off of Sonata Drive. And that was developed way back, I want to say in the seventies, but Franklin will correct me, maybe earlier than that. I just know you know the history more than I do, but it is well more than fifteen years. I feel comfortable with that. And that being the case, there has been a declaration of road withdrawal prepared and executed. And so what is before the council tonight is a resolution declaring that, as Mrs. Walker said, that this is not, this Aria Drive northern portion is not part of any thoroughfare plan within the town of Louisville and it is not.
Council members, any questions from Ms. Walker, Mr. Half?
I do. I'd like to make sure that this is something that we have talked about several months ago, the same off of Sonata Drive Road.
It is.
I mean.
This is the northern portion of the Aria Drive. The southern portion was the one that was dealt with previously.
Okay.
Other side of Sonata Drive. We did talk about it last week, I believe, prior to that time.
But it's the same general area there. Okay, thank you. And with that, again, like I say, I know the history of the area. I just thought we had dealt with this before. I'll make the motion to pass Resolution twenty-two-one-zero-twenty-three.
Mr. Franklin makes a motion.
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Franklin? Mayor's eye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Hank, how would you like to handle these next three amendments? Is this a you or is this a Pam?
I guess.
Or are you going to tag team it?
This can be a Pam, you want to take it and then I'll assist if anybody has any questions. These are related to items that were discussed in detail last week. And as we discussed last week, we are bringing these to you for your action this evening. Go ahead, Pam.
And the first item is to amend the community center budget. So we have ordinance two-zero-two-one-zero-one-nine amending capital project ordinance of the town of Louisville's Town Council Community Center Capital Projects Fund in the amount of sixty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars to provide for the installation of an irrigation system, kitchen appliances and kitchen shelving and for the expansion of the IT budget and for the increase in outdoor site lighting costs.
Any questions for Pam? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Mr. Smithman makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Smithman? Oh, David, you may have dropped off on us. There you are. Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Franklin? Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Did I miss anybody? Because my screen all jumped around. I think that was everybody. The mayor's eye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Pam, this is a continuation of what we just did.
Yes, the next item will actually amend our annual operating budget for the general fund. So we have ordinance two-zero-two-one-zero-two-zero, amending budget ordinance twenty-two-zero-zero-one to transfer sixty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars from the general fund to the community center capital project fund.
Any questions for Pam? We'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Franklin? Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Mayor's eye, that's unanimous. And ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't gathered, it is very difficult to just spend money in the town of Louisville. We have to move it from one place, put it in another, and we have to vote to move that money around. So while it seems a bit cumbersome, Ms. Oriole has assured us that that's the proper way to do it so we can track all of your dollars that we spend. Hank, I believe you have an irrigation system contract.
Yes, we have Resolution two-zero-two-one-zero-two-six awarding the contract for an irrigation system for the Mary Allen Warren Community Center Carolina Irrigation of Low Gap in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Any questions for Hank?
I do have a brief one.
Yes, sir.
Did we bid this or did the contractor bid this? And how did we arrive at this contractor?
We got two quotes from irrigation companies that do this type of work. One within the precise area and then this one, this price from this company was the much better price of the two.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we've actually had some local input and, you know, this is still regional.
Right.
Very good. And Hank, if I recall correctly, this includes irrigation in the circle with the big trees out front?
Yes, to the extent it's necessary, we have an irrigation sleeve that runs across there. I'm not sure exactly what will be irrigating on the other side. Right now, we don't need to get into the drip zone of the trees right now with digging. So, but we do have an irrigation sleeve that goes into the circle for future.
Excellent. Any additional questions, council members? Not want to entertain a motion.
Motion.
Doc Sadler makes the motion, Ms. Foster makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin? Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Doc Sadler?
Aye.
Mayor's eye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Administrative reports.
Okay, well, events in Shalford Square is going to be quick. We don't have any right now. And we have no town holidays coming up to report. And that's the sum of my report from this evening.
Very good. You paid us on the front end with the budget message. Stacy, you have an update on our internship?
Not much to report, just that we did put the job description out there to universities that have planning programs and then also to the North Carolina List Sir. And we've got about seven applicants so far, so they're filtering in, so I think we'll have a very good pool to choose from.
I'm sorry, what schools are represented among those applicants?
UNCG, UNC Chapel Hill, Appalachian State and ECU so far.
Very good. Thank you, Stacy. Ms. Walker, you have an announcement for a special project review committee?
Muted.
We've only been doing this a year, Ms. Walker, so you'll get the hang of it here after a while.
I know. I keep forgetting that I had to talk. Anyway, I just reminded everyone that we were going to have a special projects review committee meeting following the council meeting because we've received a request for a grant. And so that will be following this meeting. And I also, if you look at your agenda, I provided all of the budget workshop dates so that you don't forget what they are.
Very good. And we'll remind you, the public who is watching, listening, you are certainly invited to attend and hear the discussion about the budget. If you'll make notes of those dates, I'm sure you're going to want to set aside time to be with us over your dinner hour. It probably beats Jeopardy or Wheel of Fortune or whatever. It could be, it could be a whole lot of fun. So you're more than welcome to attend. Hank, will you go through it with us, please, the approvals that we made at our briefing meeting last week?
Okay, last week. Feel a little like a game show host now. We took care of the voting delegate for City Vision Conference twenty-two-one and that is Mr. Mayor Mike Horn. And last, we had the approval of ordinance twenty-two-one-zero-one-six, amending budget ordinance twenty-two-zero-zero-one in an amount of four thousand three hundred six dollars to fund a summer internship in the planning department for four hundred hours at ten dollars per hour. That's it.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a briefing meeting, as you know, the first Thursday of every month. And on occasion, we find it necessary to take actions at that meeting. We do like to report those out at our regular town council meeting, so you know what we have done. Stacy, you want to put up our public comment contact sheet, please? Very good. We are at the second opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, if you'd wish to share your comments with the town council, this is a great time to do it. The phone number, of course, all of us have it indelibly etched in our brains, six-four-six-five-five-eight-eight-six-fifty-six. In New Jersey, it's bigelow-seven-one-four-one-four. That's not true. Don't call us from New Jersey. If you look at the louisvalenci.net, you can go to residents and click on event calendar and click on tonight's meeting and you'll be able to be, to join us via Zoom. Hank, if we had anybody stick with us this evening?
We have people watching us, but no one wishes to speak.
Well, very good. Again, if you're calling in, it's star nine to raise your hand. And if you are on Zoom, there's a little icon down there that shows the hand being raised. Very good. Council members, before we go into closed session, any discussion or comments you'd like to make this evening? Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, this is just a question. I know we talked about it last week in regards to the comp plan. Just for Stacy, has there been any updates or where are we at on that? Anything that we need to make the public aware of as it relates to their participation or as we're forming up these stakeholder things?
There has not. I would just recommend to you guys as council, if you have contacts, I know last time we talked about churches, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, stakeholders, if you feel they're a stakeholder in the community, to reach out to me and let me know their contact information so I can reach out to them. I have started this week compiling that list of all the board and committee members and, you know, those types of people that, you know, hold a stakeholder type position in the town to let me know because invitations for that will be going out next week.
That's going up on our website, our website and our Facebook page?
Not particularly for the stakeholder. That's a little bit different than all the public involvement.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
Meetings will be on the website and everything like that. Every Tuesday, excuse me, every other Tuesday, I have a meeting with our consultant set up bi-weekly that we go over all of those things so we can stay on track.
Very good. Thank you, Stacy.
Is that like an actual paper invitation or like an email invitation? What kind of information do we need to pass along to you?
It will be whatever it needs to be. I know some people don't always have email addresses or, you know, even if I have to pick up the phone and call to talk to them, it'll be whatever form of invitation that best suits that individual to get the information to them.
Great, thank you.
And Stacy, just for a clear understanding, what is the definition of a stakeholder and what's the definition of general public?
General public would just be residents few and far between. You know, anybody that lives here, all age demographics, anything, everybody, anybody and everybody that lives in the town limits of Louisville. But a stakeholder is generally those who play an integral part in the town, in the growth of the town. They may have stakeholder in businesses. They may be in the developer realm. They serve on our board and committees. They may have a stakehold in, in, in the, like I said, the, um, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Civic Clubs, Historic Society, all, all of those types of individuals, churches. Um, if there's any other type of organizations out there that, that hold kind of a special place for the town and, and do a lot for the town, then, um, I mean, those are the type of stakeholders that we would be looking for.
Very good. Okay, council members, anything else? Beau, will you take us, uh, into the reason for the closed session?
Yes, sir. This closed session would be, uh, pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A5 to establish or instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating one, the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, or two, the amount of compensation and other material terms of an employment contract or proposed employment contract.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, Dr. Sadler, was that you?
No, go ahead, Mayor. I just need to say something before.
No. Okay, very good. Okay, oh, well, Hank, go ahead and say something and then I'll, I'll, I'll move us out.
People and attendee, as attendees watching the meeting, I would ask that those people that are watching the meeting as attendees within Zoom, please exit the for, the virtual format at this point. We need to go into closed session. And then once we also have the ability to do that, we will, uh, I'll be shutting off Channel 6 and Facebook.
And folks, that doesn't mean we don't want you to come back. Um, we do not anticipate taking any action once we come out of closed session. However, if you'd like to rejoin us for the, uh, to, to watch the consideration of the special projects review committee meeting, that will be on Zoom and that should be entertaining as well, should last, uh, should last just a little bit. But once again, we don't, we do not anticipate taking any action coming out of closed session. Uh, but we, you're certainly welcome to come back after that. With that, council, entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I, now. I still have to shut some things down, so.
And then you can do the motion.
Okay, I just want to make sure we.
Yeah, Mr. Smithman makes the motion.
Second.
Mrs. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Uh, with a break while he's shutting down.
Okay, Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Dr. Sadler?
Aye.
Mayor's eye. We'll be back, uh, in a bit, folks. We're, we're now going to go into closed session. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, those of you that decided to stick with us, we're now back in session. And as we mentioned, we're not, we are not having any action, uh, before we adjourn. Council members, is there any final comments before, uh, we adjourn this meeting and the special projects group meets? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Smithman makes a motion. Franklin makes a second. Any Scott, any further discussion? Ms. Welch?
Aye.
I figured I'd change up on you and see how that, that. Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin? Dr. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye, good night.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Mayor's eye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, meeting is adjourned.